We'll call the regular meeting of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury to Order today, Thursday, April 4th. We ask that you please silence your cell phone and if there's anything that anybody would like to speak on the agenda, we ask that you please fill out a blue slip at the back of the room and bring them to Ms. Jessica at the front table. We will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Guillory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear Lord, I know in the presence of two or more you are here, and I ask that as we go through this meeting tonight, you be over all of us to help us. There are more than sixty verses in the Bible of leadership, and you have put each one of us here for that, good Lord, and let us make good decisions for Calcasieu Parish. Thank you, dear Lord. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andropont?
Here.
Mr. Barris is unable to attend, as is Mr. Burley. Ms. Eason?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentale?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
And Mr. Tremonti cannot attend tonight, and President Barti?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item one is to hold a public hearing at 5:45 PM. We will come back to that item. We will move to... To A, Appearance by the Honorable Clayton Davis, Fourteenth Judicial District Court Judge, candidate for Louisiana Third Circuit Court of Appeals Judge. Honorable Judge Davis, we ask that you state your name and address for the records, please.
Clayton Davis, 1001 Lake Shore Drive. I'm not giving you my home address. Unless you need it. It's right across the street. I will be a candidate in November for the seat currently held by Kent Savoy. It's always been a Calcasieu seat, and I intend to keep it that way. That's sixty percent of the vote, and I'm the only Calcasieu candidate who will be on the ballot. So, I mean, I know everyone here, and my... I'm a Republican, socially conservative, and I'm a... But we'll have the support of law enforcement because they know how I run my business, and I show up on time, I'm prepared, I make decisions, and we run the most efficient criminal division in the Fourteenth JDC based on records that the DA's office keeps, and I'm proud of that. We've worked at it, and we communicate, and we just... We show up and take care of things. So, that's a little bit of a platform, but I'm twenty-seven years as an attorney and fifteen years on the bench. I've got the experience to do this job, so that's what we're gonna do. So, I appreciate... Appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any question for Judge Davis?
Thank y'all so much. I do have to say this. Couple of weeks ago, you know, it's easy to get out of jury service, especially for people like you all, and it's inconvenient, and I give people excuses all the time. And about two weeks ago, we had a very difficult trial. It only lasted two days, but it was... It was all you could take. And Mr. Stelly was our foreman, and he... They did a great job. They took care of their business. And I'm proud that he stepped up, did his civic duty. We need that, and I just have to... I have to say that because it was... It was tough, but thank you, and thank the rest of y'all.
Was he found guilty?
Mr. Stelly? He was.
He's always guilty of something.
He... I think he was the only one willing to be the foreman, but yeah, he was found guilty, and he should have been. So, thank you. Take care.
Thank you, sir. To B, Appearance by Mr. Brandon Kratz, Outreach Representative for the State of Louisiana, Attorney General Liz Merle.
President Barti, Mr. Kratz is unable to attend. He sends his apologies.
All right, moving right along. Three A, Adopt a Resolution Approving a Consulting Services Contract for Right-of-Way Acquisition Services for Various Parish Projects. We have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on three B.
Three B, Adopt a Resolution Approving a Professional Engineering Contract for the LA 1256 at Carless Drive Intersection Improvements Project. We have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three C, Adopt Resolutions Approving Permanent Public Facility Servitude Agreements for the East Calcasieu Consolidated Waterworks Utility District Project. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Four A, Approve the Amendments of the Regular Meeting of the Police Jury Dated March 7, 2024. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Four B?
Move on four B.
Adopt a Resolution Providing Notice of Intention to Abolish Recreation District Number One of Ward Eight and Fixing the Date of a Public Hearing to be Held at the Regular Meeting of the Police Jury on May 2nd, 2024 to Receive Comments Thereon. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Five A, Approve Applications for Liquor and Beer Permits.
I'm on.
Staff recommends three renewals be approved. We have a motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Five B?
Move on five B.
Adopt a Resolution Extending Executive Order 2020-09A, which waives zoning restrictions and fees for temporary dwelling units as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through August 29, 2024. We have a motion by Mrs. Eason and a second by Mr. Andropont. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Five C, Adopt an Ordinance Amending Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Calcasieu, Louisiana Article Nine Flood Plane Management. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Six A?
Move on six A.
Adopt a Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Professional Architectural Contract for the River Bluff Park Phase Three Pavilion and Walking Path Project. We have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. How much longer is this gonna take? It's been going on a long time. So, what's the path forward now that we passed this tonight? How much longer? Look, Dean looks real anxious. He wants to answer that question.
Mr. Kelly, state your name and department, please, for the records.
Dean Kelly, Director of Facilities. We plan to have this bid set ready towards the end of July so we can break ground the last quarter of this year. Now, that will finalize this piece of the development. We still have the west side, and we don't have a plan for that just yet due to, you know, budgetary constraints. So, this all started a while back. We couldn't move forward back then.
At the same time, and we can start working on the plan for the west side while this is happening. I'm sure Mr. Quinn probably be real happy about that.
Right. And Mr. Smith.
So, while you up here, you know, I thought about you as soon as I turned that corner, and I was hoping you was gonna be here tonight. And since I got you up here and I'm gonna put you on the spot, I've got a shovel in the back of my truck, and tomorrow I'm gonna come find you, and me and you is gonna plant that oak tree that I've been asking you to plant for about, what, six or eight months? I saw you out there measuring. You had the spot right where we were gonna plant it.
I did, and on that date, if... On that date, I felt like I was gonna be able to move forward and plant a tree for you.
Who messed you up? Was it Mr. Bowling or what?
Well, look, every one of these projects winds up getting a little bit complicated, and so as we look at the rest of this complex and the work that's going on related to the new juvenile... Sorry, I'm stuttering on my words here. The Judicial Center Complex, that project and how it affects the remainder of this complex, we needed to take a step back and look at it. So, when we're ready for that, I can... We can certainly share that plan, but planting a tree right now, I would wind up having to transplant it later. So...
Well, let's try to get that figured out. Look, I mean, obviously, I'm too old to actually see it grow, but I wanna plant it for somebody else. Maybe my grandkids will be able to see it. Well, if you... If there ends up being an oak tree out there, you gonna know who put it there.
So, we got the Sallier Oak and the Landry Oak.
Well, I wondered. I hadn't... I wondered what was going on. I thought it just can't take that long to plant the tree.
At that time, I felt like it was gonna work out, but as we've continued to develop plans, it would have been in the way. So, I need to wait until those plans are finalized, and then we can plant.
Maybe another twelve months we get it planted? I mean, you wanna plant it in the middle of the summer, you know, we may have problems. It may not grow.
Any further questions from Mr. Dean?
Keep me updated.
All right, we had a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Seven A, Adopt a Proclamation That April 2024 Is Fair Housing Month in Calcasieu Parish. We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Eight A, Adopt a Resolution Approving a Continuation Grant Application to the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement in the Amount of Up to $70,000 for Case Manager and Counseling Services. We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Abshar. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on nine A.
Nine A, Approve Payment of All Current Invoices. We have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Nine B, Adopt a Resolution on Qualification Statements
Move on nine B.
For the West Goche Road Corridor Study. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Wait a minute. Hold on. Let me back up. Let me further read. After further review of qualifications, staff recommends Atlas Technical Consultants LLC be awarded the contract. So, we have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by... By Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Nine C, Action on Bids Received for One 2024 or Newer
Second.
One-half-ton Extended Cab Pickup Truck. Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of $40,600 be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Nine D?
Move on nine D.
Action on Bids for One 2024 or Newer Midsize Sports Utility Vehicle. Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of $36,630 be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Nine E, Action on Bids for One 2024 or Newer One-half Extended Cab Pickup Truck.
Second.
Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of $40,600 be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on the items below, I was looking, and it said that some of the bids were kind of rejected because of failure to have a Louisiana dealer license, and I see was Mark Dodge rejected because of that? Because I know they do business in Lake Charles, and I didn't understand.
It may be as simply as they forgot to include it in their bid pack. If that's the case, then they must be rejected. They may actually be licensed properly, but if they don't submit the bid package appropriately, we've got to qualify them.
Okay, I just wanted to know what was going on with Mark Dodge. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion. Any objection? Motion carries. Nine F, Action on Bids for One 2024 or Newer
Move on nine A.
One... I'm sorry?
He made a motion.
Oh, One-half-Ton Single Cab Pickup Truck. Staff recommends a bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of $36,280 be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by... Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. We're gonna finish this now.
Mr. President, just a reminder, it's 5:45. Okay.
Do I have to start it now?
No, you don't.
I'm gonna finish these next two, and we'll go back. Nine G, Adopt a Resolution
Move on nine G.
On bids for the... For the Edgeline, Dequincy Road and Drainage Rehabilitation. Staff recommends the bid of RE Height Construction LLC in the amount of $4,137,454.68 be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Andropont. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Nine H, Adopt a Resolution Accepting Overlaying of Various Roads as Substantially Complete.
Move on nine H.
We have a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any objections? Any discussion? Motion carries. We will go up to our public meeting, 5:45. So, we will hold a public meeting ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. One A, 4821 North Highway 27, Dequincy. Is there anyone here on that piece of property?
I would make a motion to condemn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis to condemn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One B, 1739 South Burrell Drive, Moss Bluff. Anyone here on South Burrell Drive in Moss Bluff? Is that this one?
Burrell. Aaron Reeves, is that correct?
Please state your name and address for the records, please.
I'm Aaron Reeves. My address is 335 Crystal Lane in Ragley, 70657. I'm here with my mother. It's actually her dealing. I'm just here with her.
My name is Debbie Reeves, and I live at 1122 Green Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana, and we're here on behalf of this home. This home was purchased. It originally belonged to my brother and his wife, and then my dad, in 2015, he refinanced it for my nephew, Austin. And in 2018, my dad passed away, and Austin and his wife got a divorce. And at that time, his wife was taking care of a child that was critically ill, terminally ill, and during... On the... Backtrack for just a minute. When my dad financed the home for them, the wording included the fact that they could not... That his wife would have no legal claim to the property. It would strictly be Austin's. Okay, so, when Austin and Michelle divorced, it was recommended to him that he allow Michelle to stay in this home until her son turns seventeen or he passed, whichever the case may be. Well, we had no control over the home. My nephew stopped. He hadn't paid anything on it, and... But out of respect for Elijah, the baby, we decided to main... To allow her to stay there. She would not allow any of us in the home, wouldn't allow Austin back in the home, and... Unfortunately, Elijah passed away in January of this year. He would have turned seventeen in March, but he passed away, and so it changed that... And we kept telling her, "You're gonna have to move out. You know, we want you to move out, and you need to look for you another place," and she didn't. So, I'm not sure exactly the date, but we started foreclosed eviction notices with her, and finally, she moved out, and this is the condition she left the house in. We didn't know the severity of that condition until we were able to get in there and look. Since these pictures have been taken, the parish has went in and cleaned up the yard a fair amount. But the house itself, she received after Laura $140,000 from State Farm to repair this home, which she didn't. Her family, her mother and her dad, her sister and herself, they all lived in this home. And as I said, Austin hadn't been paying on it, so we tried to find a source that we could actually take the home back without having to foreclose on Austin, and we were given the act of donation, which we did. But I have a copy of that act of donation. It's not the signed copy. We have Mr. Hooser here. He's willing to purchase the home, and we turned paperwork over to his attorneys, and they're reviewing everything. And unfortunately, we didn't think about it. We'd have brought that today. But I do have a copy of what it states of his donation to me, and so it will be in my name. It's not gonna be in Austin's name any longer. And I'm not an expert on what should be done to the home or what could be... What could be done, but Chad is. He does this all the time. So, I'm gonna ask him to speak on behalf of what the house could... How... Why we feel the house is sturdy enough that it should not be demolished.
Sir, please state your name and address for the records.
Chad Hooser, 625 South Cooley Road, Dequincy, Louisiana. The home structurally is... I do have pictures. I went and took pictures after the parish cleaned it up. It was... The trash was pretty bad, you know. It's a lot better now. They... There still is some cleanup to be done, but as far as inside the home, it is structurally sound. They have... I think, when did y'all put a new roof on?
The roof was done in...
Yeah, the roof was put on after the storm, so there's a new roof. Yeah. And then they had cats and dogs in there, so the carpet and all that needs to be taken out. But I do have pictures, if y'all wanna see them on the phone, of what they've done.
Can you...
Mr. Quinn?
Give us an... I'm sorry, Mr. President. How much time are you gonna need to resolve the legal matter, and then how much time before you can pull a permit and start work?
Ironclad has all the material right now, and the lawyers are going over that material, the legal stuff with the house. As far as inside the house, the... It needs floors, and the sheetrock on the bottom where they had cats and dogs needs taken out. The kitchen cabinets need to be taken out and redone, and then the bathtub and toilets need to be put back in.
The reason I ask, I have no... I have no issue recommending thirty days extension on this, but I need to understand that's gonna be enough time for you to resolve this legal issue, because I understand that could take time, and if that's the issue, I don't think we can continue to just let the house sit there. I mean, there needs to be some kind of activity in a positive way. So, I'm just trying to understand how long it's gonna take to resolve the legal issue, and then once you can start doing some work, if you just have... I mean, is it a legal issue? Is that gonna be the main holdup?
Yes, because the... Her father has passed, and they... The house is paid off, but the lien, nobody took it to the bank, and it's in his name, so they have to work on that also. And then with the donation, they have that, and they're working on that also. As far as... I think the neighbors were complaining or whatever about the outside, which it's done. It's all cleaned up. Then pictures are older, you know, so... And they said something about the door being open. The door, they all have new locks on there because somebody was going in. The garage does need to be cleaned out, and the garage doors need to be taken down and replaced. But as far as what it said on there, as far as somebody getting hurt, we can resolve that within, you know, thirty days is around that area.
Mr. Abshar?
So, is... Is this a cash deal?
Yes.
Or... Okay. So, as soon as the legal issues are resolved, the closing can happen. You're not waiting on bank financing or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay. And in the interim period, who will be taking care of the property as far as cutting the grass and maintaining the outside?
I'll... We'll take care of that as far as that, cutting the grass, because they, like I said, they went and removed all that. They just threw the trash outside the back of the door. All that's gone now. So, yes, we can maintain the grass for the time being until stuff is done. We shouldn't have any complaints.
How long has Ironclad had the paper... Have they been working on this? Oh, okay, so it's very recent.
Yeah, because the... Austin works offshore, so they're waiting for him to come back in from offshore.
I don't have a whole lot, other than that's my mom, and from a son's point of view, just feel my heart. My mom and dad are on disability. My dad's a severe diabetic. My mom has had several brain bleeds, and they get their money at the first of the month. By the eighth of the month, they're broke. month, by the eighth of the month, they're broke. Not saying that to embarrass my family, but if y'all allow them to be able to do this, the sale of this property will help them tremendously.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we, we extend for 60 days.
We have a motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Stelly to extend it for 60 days. Any discussion? Any objection?
To defer. To defer for 60 days, I'm sorry.
And if a permit is pulled within 60 days?
Then I think it'll be, it'll be up to staff to probably pull it.
Right. Mr. Crane, if a permit is pulled within 60 days, it doesn't come back to us?
So, um, we need a list of the repairs from a contractor. That's what the ordinance requires. And so we can work with them, uh, to get that, if that's what they wanna do, um, but yeah, that, I mean, the permit's gonna be necessary for them to be able to go in there and begin the work.
So Chad, if you could hang out until after the meeting and visit with Mr. Crane, and he can give you a list of the items that you'll need to pull a permit? Okay.
Or, or he can, or we can get with him tomorrow, uh, first thing, and, and, uh, you know, provide him whatever, whatever he needs to, to get through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer for 60 days by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One C, 2195 Topsey Road, Gillis.
Motion to condemn.
We have a motion by Mr. Quinn to condemn and remove in 30 days, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I, I'm sorry, uh, did we ask if there are any public comments on that item?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody in the audience on Topsey Road in Gillis? There are none. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One D, 2248 Tuna Lane in Lake Charles. Anyone here on Tuna Lane?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Markentale to, to demolish and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One E, 5530 Eastern Drive, Lake Charles. Anyone here on Eastern Drive?
Move on one E.
We have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Markentale to remove, to demolish and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. One F, 2529 Carlo Henry Road in Lake Charles. Anyone here on Carlo Road in Lake Charles? We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Landry to demolish and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One G, 171 Ernie Benoit Street in Lake Charles. Anyone present for 171 Ernie Benoit Street in Lake Charles?
Move to condemn. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Sm, Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Smith to condemn and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One H, north of 951 Green Moore Road in Starks. Anyone here for north of 951 Green Moore Road in Starks? We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Stelly to demolish and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One I, 308 Wade Lane in Carless. Anyone here to this, on 308 Wade Lane in Carless?
Move to condemn. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Markentale to remove and demolish in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 2966 Burke's Road in Carless. Anyone here on 2966 Burke's Road in Carless? We have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Andropont to remove and demolish in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One K, 4119 Perkins Avenue Road, Perkins Avenue in Mossville. Anyone here on 4119 Perkins Avenue in Mossville?
Should have to come to the mic.
I'm not hearing anyone. Please come to the mic. Is, is she on that one?
Yeah, I bet it's a different one. She admitted she is. This is one K, isn't it?
No, this is one, uh, King Street in Mossville.
No, no, no. No, 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 this is one K. Now, you're speaking on Perkins Avenue, is that correct? State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Judy Goche. My address is 6716 Sandpiper Circle, Iowa, Louisiana, 70647.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, I don't know if, uh, it's my auntie's house, and I don't know if she know that they was about to, uh, demolish their little house or not, so I'm just asking for maybe a little extension so I can get in contact with her to let her know.
Mr. President?
But I come from my, my father's house.
Okay, Mr. Andropont. So in Mr. Burley's absence, he had contacted me prior to the meeting, said he didn't receive any calls of the three condenations on the agenda. However, he did say that if there was a request for review, that he would support that, so I will withdraw my motion, and if the second of my motion withdraws, I'll offer a new motion for an extension of 30 days. Mr. Gaff? We're good? We're good?
Uh, you don't need to withdraw the motion. A motion to defer will take precedence over the main motion, so a motion to defer with a second can move forward.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Andropont to ex, to, um, extend?
For 30 days.
To, to defer for 30 days?
For 30 days.
You said 30 days?
30, yes, sir.
30 days. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see Mr. Robinson here tonight.
He, he's not here. No, he's not, but I can answer.
Did someone sign for probably the many, many letters that were mailed? There, there would've been more than one. This process goes on for quite a while.
Um, I'm not sure if it, if they signed for it or whether we had to advertise, uh, but that's typically what we do. If it's not signed for, we, we advertise in the paper, and we post it at the location of where the-
But it goes to the same address that the tax bill goes to, does it not?
It does. It goes to the, um, it went to Deanie L. Jones Montgomery, 1606 Opelousas Street, Lake Charles.
Okay. Yeah, that's what's on the agenda. You know, I don't know the person, she, I'm assuming she's gonna contact the owner, but you know, I mean, and hopefully they'll know about it.
But I don't think she's living on Opelousas Street anymore.
Okay. I mean, they're, they're gonna have to come here and prove why it shouldn't be condemned, and also that they have the means to pay for it and, and do all what needs to be done, but I'm, you know, that's all I need to say. If y'all wanna give them 30 days to do that, that's fine.
Mr. Andropont.
So yes, we, we'll give you 30 days, but we'll need some answers to Mr. Landry's point. You know, this is only the leeway period unless there's some action, but we, we're trying to work with you.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, you know, cause it's my uncle, and I just kinda hate to see it go down.
Well, please let them know that they're on the clock.
Yes, I will. I will when I leave here.
All right, thank you.
So we have a motion to defer by Mr. Andropont. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Landry. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion to defer carries. One L, 4313 King Street in Mossville, and Ms. Judy Montgomery, you're here to speak on that one as well?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we waiting to try to sell it, like, to the plant, and, uh, that's all, you know, I'm just asking for a little more time, hoping, you know, to sell it to the plant. Uh, somebody, I think in the family, had talked to someone, and they said they was giving them an extension, and I don't know, the next notice we noticed, it said that they wanted us to tear it down.
So I'm, I'm not following. You don't have any type of agreement as of yet that the plan is gonna purchase it, is that correct?
Not right now, no, not in motion, no.
Uh, Mr. Andropont.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to move to condemn on that. I'm sorry.
We have a motion by Mr. Andropont to condemn and remove in 30 days, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion to condemn is granted. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
One M, 1544 East Houston River Road in Sulfur. Anyone here on 1544 East Houston River Road? We have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Markentale to condemn and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One N, 618 Hollis Lane, Moss Bluff. Anyone here on 618 Hollis Lane?
Move, move to con, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Andropont to remove, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One O, 834 Bozo Road, Moss Bluff.
Move on one O.
We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Quinn to condemn and remove in 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. All right. We will now go back down to board appointments.
Move to appoint Mr. Bobby Little.
Consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number One. Appoint Mr. Bobby Little. We have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by?
Markentale.
Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Ten B, Community Center and Playground District Number One, Ward Six. Motion to defer for 30 days. Motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Quinn to defer for 30 days. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Ten C.